Welcome to City Series Planning Commission Meeting. We have some business to take care of. We'll read that first. Notice, this meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 59453, Subdivision E of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54940 at SEC, Series Resolution Number 21-101 in the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19 members of public, may be also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing PA.UF by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Include the agenda item number or public comment period of the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments in the record. Specifically request do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comments will be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of planning commission. Now, the clerk, please call the order. Call the roll. I'm sorry.
We're going to wait and do that after the administration of the oath of office. So right now, we're going to do a flag salute or pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Now we'll have the swearing in of our new planning commissioner, Martinez.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
And I will take this obligation freely.
I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Welcome to the commission. Now can we have the roll call?
I'd be most happy to. Commissioner Del Nero. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Katchel. And Commissioner Martinez. And please note that our Chair Commissioner Smith is excused this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any conflict of interest declarations for anything on tonight's agenda? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move on to citizens' communication. While the planning commission welcomes and encourages participation in planning commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under jurisdiction of the planning commission and not on the post-agenda may be addressed by the general public, however, California law prohibits the planning commission taking action on any ever which is not on the post-agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the planning commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located at the bottom right of your screen. If you're participating by phone, please press nine on your phone. Names will be called in order to the requests to receive, and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Do we have any members of Zoom? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Clerk, have we received any public comments through email?
No, I have not received any.
Okay, I guess. Okay, come to the podium then, please. Please give us your name. I can't hear what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Is this regarding the Hatch Road Shopping District?
That'll come up later. That'll come up later on the agenda.
Okay.
Right now, we're just asking for comments on something not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
You so much.
And now we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have two items on the agenda. Consent agenda, number one, clerk's report of posting the agenda for the regular meeting, the planning commission meeting of October 18th, 2021, was posted on October 14th, and two, approval of minutes, October 4th, 2021. I assume only three of us can vote on that one.
Yes, I'd like to suggest that each item be considered separately as our new commissioner will need to abstain from approving the minutes from our last meeting.
Yeah, okay. So can I get a motion for the item number one on the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Add a motion second for the first item on the consent agenda, clerk's report of posting. Could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Vote on it.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Second item is the approval of the minutes of the October 4th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Add a motion and second, would please call the approval. Vote on the approval of minutes.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
And I want to announce that Commissioner Martinez will be abstaining, so motion passes three zero with one absent and one abstent.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the public hearings. One item on the agenda tonight. This following item is vesting tentative parcel map, BTPM 21-06 and conditional use permit, CUP 21-07, proposal to redevelop the northeast corner of East Hatch Road and Herndon Avenue to permit the development of self-storage facility, convenience store, gas station, and other commercial uses, as well as associated parking and landscaping improvements. Evergreen Devco Inc., applicant. We have staff report, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Page forty-nine, Mr. Home. Thank you, Christopher. Okay, so just to give you some background on this. In 1976, city approved an eighty-four thousand square foot Kmart commercial center located here at thirteen fifty-one East Hatch Road, which is also known as the northeast corner of Hatch and Herndon. Kmart had been operating from the site since nineteen seventy-six until they closed the business in October of twenty eighteen. From October twenty eighteen through December of twenty twenty, potential developers had communicated with staff some interest on the possibility of redeveloping the site with multiple users, but nothing had materialized from those discussions. The site has remained vacant without a tenant for the past three years. The applicant, Evergreen Devco Incorporated, began contacting staff in January of this year, indicating that they had some interest in purchasing the property to rebuild the site with multiple commercial users. So for the past several months, the developer provided staff with several different potential layouts, commercial users for the site, and informed staff that they had tentative agreements with some of the youth pending city approval of the appropriate entitlements. The developer's final proposed layout for the site reflects subdivision of the property into six commercial zone lots, with the development of four current commercial users, including a Dutch Brothers coffee shop, a Raising Cane's chicken finger drive-through operation, a quick stop convenience store with a gas station, and the conversion of the previous Kmart building to a public storage self-storage facility. The two remaining lots resulting from the subdividing of the property would be developed in the future under separate entitlements with which those proposals would be the subject to review and approval by the city planning commission. The applicant was informed that the new project required approval of the tentative parcel map, subdividing property, and additional use permit and entitlement for architectural review, use, and the placement of the buildings. So the application was made, submitted to the city in August of twenty twenty-one. And so basically, what you have here is nine acre site being provided and six separate lots to facilitate the redevelopment of the commercial center, where it will serve series residents and nearby communities, as well as travelers passing through series. The applicant's plan for the property would accommodate six commercial users of a total building area of about one hundred and thirty thousand square feet, of which four of the six users are proposing buildings at this time through the city's conditional use permit and entitlement process. So those include a nine hundred and fifty square foot Dutch Brothers coffee shop building, three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven square foot Raising Cane's chicken fingers drive-through restaurant operation, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight square foot quick stop convenience store with gas station, and one hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four square foot public self-storage self-storage facility, which includes the conversion of the existing Kmart building, which is the eighty-four thousand square foot building, in addition to the construction of four additional self-storage buildings that total thirty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet. Access to the project site is provided by way of the existing entrances from Hatch Road, Herndon Avenue, and the adjoining property to the east, and over two hundred and thirty parking spaces are expected to be provided to serve the develop. Appropriate deterrence using project signage and pavement markings will be incorporated into the product to improve onsite project circuit at the project drive-through and drive-al accessories. Only traffic circulation aspect of this project that would be different from what the existing conditions of the commercial center, the addition of a right turn only lane into the site from Hatch Road. Although it's expected that the project would generate traffic, it is expected to be less or similar in nature when compared to the previous commercial center operation due to the self-storage component and the relatively smaller scale of commercial users intended for the site. Mr. Home, would you please put up page fifty-one, please? Thank you. In terms of the overall appearance of these buildings, the project elevations are represented on pages forty-eight through sixty of the staff report. It'll be a single story in height and integrated with the multi-plane pitch roof features at their building fringes designed to variable heights of twenty to twenty-five feet. So as you can see here, the first building is the Dutch Brothers building that will primarily consist of gray and blue metal panels with split face concrete masonry near and metal awnings. Page fifty-three, please. The Raising Cane's building will put a combination of gray and earth tone stucco plaster finishes with brick veneer treatment at the base, as well as some metal awnings that would be in certain elevations. Page fifty-six, please. Again, so what you see here pretty is the old Kmart building and what the applicant for the public self-storage poses here. In addition to the modifications that you see here, which include the orange and the earth tone stucco plaster finishes for the main body, there will be four additional buildings that were also shown on the site plan. One of them will be twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-one square building, and one will be five thousand forty-one square foot, and then there'll be two at two thousand four hundred and eighty-one square feet each. There's also going to be some masonry block and stack some veneer treatments at the front of some of the buildings, buildings one and five. Page sixty-one, please. And finally, here's the quick stop convenience store. It's going to incorporate like horizontal signing with both stone and brick veneer for the main body and stone veneer wrapped around the base of the build. Staff supports the architectural design for these developments as the redesigning of the site with the new buildings will improve the look of the neighborhood near the Hatch Road and Herndon Avenue intersection. Furthermore, we are in support of this project as the city will be obtaining two new commercial restaurant type users, Dutch Brothers and the Raising Cane's, which do not currently exist within the city today. And the applicant will be retaining the previous Kmart building, converting it to this self-storage facility instead of demolishing the bill. Also, the proposal establishes a variety of commercial uses that provide opportunity to support a healthy balance with commercial businesses that already exist near the Hatch Road, Herndon Avenue intersection and promotes a quality product for the overall layout of the site. And the development is an alternative use that provides economic opportunities that would not otherwise exist if the existing commercial center remains occupied without tenants. Allowing the applicant before with their development proposal for future commercial users will increase the value of the property as well generate additional sales, extra revenue for the city. If the commission is looking to consider approving this project tonight, I just want to make the commission aware that there are two sets of conditions of approval, the one for the tenant map and the other for the conditional use permit. And with that said, there are two corrections to the conditions that staff would be recommending. On page seventeen of the staff report, staff inadvertently list condition B three in PC Resolution 2120, the tenant map, and instead, the condition should be listed under PC Resolution 2121 of the conditional use permit, in which that condition would be listed at project specific condition B twenty-six. And the second modification will be on page twenty-seven of the staff report. Staff is recommending modifying condition of approval, B eight, of PC Resolution 2121 to read as follows. The developer will shall ensure that each lot meets the minimum number of parking spaces per code requirement and that all parking stall lengths and lengths and drive-al lengths meet city standards. And so with that said, staff again is recommending approval of the project. We'll be happy to take any questions that you may have this time.
Hey, thank you. Do we have any? Do we have any comments or questions at this time from members of the commission? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item, please come to the agenda, to the podium, and give your name and then give your comments.
Good evening again. My name is Cynthia Lauf. I'm sorry that.
Could we have you speak a little louder, please? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry that I haven't been here before, but I'm just now hearing about this. I don't know if it's been, you know, said around town much about it, or if you guys just decided among yourselves, this is something that the city needed. And listening to what you guys were saying tonight, you were mainly talking about the look that they would have for the city and that type of thing. The sign on the corner of Hatch and Herndon says Hatch Road Shopping District. So some point, the commission approved Hatch Road to be the shopping district, else that big cement sign would not be out there. As far as the coffee shop and Raising Cane, that's great, because not only will it benefit from the community, but people coming down ninety-nine, so that's a good thing. I'm just concerned about a storage facility. I don't know where that goes in compliance with a shopping district. The storage facility is not going to do anything for the shopping district. And that's my concern as to why it's there. We already, in the convenience store, we have Seven-Eleven right next to Kmart. Now, Kmart closed because Sears decided to close that Kmart. Not that the community didn't shop there, because that store was always full. So the area needed shopping. We also have lost two grocery stores, which was a Rayleigh's and a Rancho Santa Fe, however you call it, San Miguel. And nobody's talking about putting in more groceries for the community. I think we need more of that than we need a storage facility on ninety-nine. Hatch Road is a main thoroughfare for series. Why are we putting a storage facility there? I mean, we have people up and down this road, people getting off the freeway. For, we already have, they just built a gas station at Seven-Eleven. Expanded. We have a lot of problems with people hanging out in front of convenience stores, homeless, troublemakers, whatever. We already have that problem with Seven-Eleven. So I don't understand why. You guys can explain to me why we need a storage facility in a shopping district. I just, I just would like to know who, who thought that was a good idea? Maybe the person that thought it was a good idea can explain it to me, because I don't understand.
The request came from the applicant, and presumably, they will speak and present their position tonight.
I see a lot of things that they've done for communities. Walgreens, Fry's, Chase, Sonic, Cane's, Sprouts, Smart and Final, Fresh and Easy. But not storage. I looked through their whole website. I can see any storage facility that they brought to a community, especially for a main road like Hatch Road.
That's a decision that we have to reach this evening. That's why we're here. This is the first time this has been heard, by the way. This hasn't come up before.
But you said the idea was brought to you in January. I live in that community. I'm just now hearing about it. And I, if I could have got to some of the other people that live around in the community, they would be here tonight.
Okay.
But like I said, it wasn't broadcasted. And I know sometimes they, they put things low, so it's not a lot of commotion when you want to just go ahead and ask certain items. But I don't think that's fair to the people that, I don't know how many of you live in series or even live in that area.
No, every item that comes before us receives public notice, and we hold a public hearing. This is the first hearing. This has not come up previously. Nothing's happened that you're not aware of.
Okay, well, I would like to know why a storage facility would even be thought of on Hatch Road when it says it's a Hatch Road Shopping District. That's what it is. That's, that's just what it is. That was, that was planned before you guys came to the planning commission, I'm sure. So I would just like to know why a storage facility was an idea for Hatch Road. I want to know that for myself and nobody else cares. I would like to know, because if somebody else asked me, at least I can say, well, I was at the meeting. They told me the reason they thought that storage facility was a good idea is because of so and so and so. So I would just like to know the answer.
That's a, that's a fine question, and perhaps the applicant will explain why they feel it is the appropriate place. We don't, we don't know what process went into their thinking as far as that use for the building.
But.
But you're correct. It's not, it's not a shopping facility. It's a, it's a storage facility, and that doesn't seem to fit. So we'll hear from the applicant. I assume they're going to speak tonight as to why they feel this is an appropriate location, and that's a decision that we have to reach.
Okay, but for, for us in series, as far as our, our residents and you guys as our planning commission, like I said, we lost two grocery stores on that side of the road. We only have one, one grocery store there now, on the right side of the road. So if, if they are willing to maybe do something like that, but a storage facility, I don't see where that's going to benefit the city money-wise nor benefit people getting off the freeway that spend their money here to stop here in a shopping district for gas or for food or whatever. Now, how is that going to bring money to the city? And is this the only time we're going to discuss this? Are you guys going to vote on this tonight as to say your name?
That's the intention, yes.
So now, nobody else is going to get a chance to say anything about this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last question.
I said, none of the other residents, because they don't know what's going on, is going to be able to put input into this decision.
Notice was given to everybody required by law. As far as, as far as I'm concerned, that's part of every public hearing. We give notice, written notices given to landowners within the area. And we have quite, we have quite a few people in the audience tonight. Believe me, this is a lot of people for us, so we'll see what they have to say as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, one more thing. You said developments. They didn't say what those future developments were. So we, we don't know what those future developments are. We have two, you said two places to go, which would be Dutch Brothers and Raising Cane's. Other than that, is any of the other things bringing money to the city of series?
No, at this time, we don't know what those would be. They would have to come back to the planning commission, as I understand it, at such time as we get a specific user for those sites. Right now, they don't know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Someone else like to come to?
I also about the same, the construction by her.
Could you give your name, please?
Sonia Escobar.
Thank you.
I just leave just behind where the storage is going to be. And my concern is about the fence over there, the wall fence. If they're going to be a wall fence, because I know, even though we're talking about this, this is probably already been, it's going to be done. So I just, my concern is about the noise, the lighting, all those concerns that if they're going to build a fence or they're going to do something to block the noise about the people going in and out in that storage facility. And I don't know how this is, it's going to be approached with us as a residence behind the area, because I live exactly behind where it's going to be. And as it is, it's being noisy when they did the construction over there in Seven-Eleven. It was noisy, filthy. My air conditioning broke because of that, because of all the dust. So now I'm thinking about all this, and I'm going like, it's going to be the same. And also, it's, it's just the noise and the lighting and the the people going in and out in that storage facility is my concern too.
Okay, noise and lighting would be your two major concerns then, is what I'm hearing.
Oh, lighting is bad, because I can show you the pictures of my friend's house that she lives next by, behind Seven-Eleven. She still have like a reflection all the time in her house. The lighting is really strong. So she sent me those pictures too. I can show you those pictures. So I imagine my house is going to be like that too.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, do we have anyone on Zoom waiting to speak?
You see, no hands raised at this time.
Wait a minute, we've got a. Okay.
I am the developer. Rog Collins.
I am the developer, um, Rog Collins with Evergreen Devco. Um, so I wanted to address, um, this lady's concerns about the supermarket and tell you kind of when we entered escrow in this property, it was in January of this year, in 2021, in kind of the heart of COVID. And the brokers that are working with us on the project are two of the best brokers around. They'd been working on the project for over a year. And so they've been out to all the different retailers, trying to get interest in the retail box. And there had been nominal interest here and there. And as this, uh, um, lady said, we have a nice relationship with many different supermarkets and one of them is Sprouts. And we actually brought Sprouts to the, um, the center. They were interested. Center. We were excited because there was a couple of other retailers that said, if Sprouts goes there, we might consider going there. Sprouts visited the site. I shared this with James and with Tom, uh, earlier. And unfortunately Sprouts turned down the site. They walked the building. The building is a little bit, obsolete from a retail perspective these days. And unfortunately, we planned to try to put a market in there, but they turned it down. And so what we did in the following months was just listen to the demand of what we saw out there. We had all kinds of demand for people that wanted to be on Hatch. The big box retailers in COVID just weren't doing deals. Their interest, you know, they're starting to shrink. They're not expanding, fortunately. And to absorb 84,000 feet became very difficult to do. And so the demand was all to be on Hatch. And so, gosh, I don't know. It was probably six months into it, five, six months into it. We were contacted by storage users that said, hey, do you think there's a chance of doing it? So we talked with Tom Westbrook and with James Michaels and we said, guys, what do you think of this? We're having a difficult time with the retail. If we did put storage in there, we could keep the existing building. We could fix it up. It would allow us to bring in retailers that you don't have in the city and actually meet the demand of what everybody's telling us is, is the Hatch Road frontage. So that's what we did. We had the conversation and that's the direction we ended up going. Unfortunately, it's as, as she says, we are retail developers. Um, I think we've done one other, uh, self-storage deal, uh, or done a deal with self-storage. But we are retail developers and that's our expertise. And we went into this with the idea of re-tenanting in 84,000 square foot building. And the demand just wasn't there that could meet that. The demand was to be on the street, to be there on Hatch Road. And so that's where it kind of evolved. And I think that public storage, we, we were very lucky. We got best of class retailers or, or users in the thing with public storage, Raising Canes, Dutch Bros and Quick Stop. Quick Stop is one of the largest, um, operators of gas stations in the United States. So we're able to get really good operators and we're excited about it. It's different certainly than what we were expecting. But, you know, given the, the state that we are in these days in the retail world, I think it's a really good result. Wanted to add anything.
This is my partner, John Prestas.
And staff, um, I'm John Prestas with Evergreen Devco. I just wanted to say here, um, appreciate you guys considering the subject. I've been working closely with Rob. Yeah, right. A couple of the things that you mentioned. Um, we'd actually had conversations with multiple brokers trying to. Public storage. Operator and felt that less intensive parking use would allow for the retailers to be out. Really important to retailers. Which is a critical component to making that. Storage is coming in. Investing significant capital. At this point in time where we are. Old, uh, attracted a really strong mix of retailers and storage. Part of the project. I perspective. Tracked it in this location.
I think one, one last thing is to. What happens behind you, I think. We're okay with that. I know that, that they have, um, high security in all their locations. They're pros at what they do. Address that in design, et cetera. I would live behind you, like where you did. Think from a noise standpoint, you're probably have a lot less noise if you wouldn't commercial you. Not going to be a lot of looking there with you.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know with, uh, I don't know that that was actually a plan.
Chair, chair, I hate to interrupt. Um, I think there may be some delays in the audio and we have the speakers that are speaking. But if, unless they speak directly into the microphone, it's hard, at least to hear it over Zoom. I don't know it in person.
Yeah, I, I agree. This debate back and forth with.
Okay. Well, I think her concern is just that she has a lower wall. And with the noise, I think that the noise from a storage facility would be less than from a commercial facility. I think that we have to address the lighting though, that she was, um, uh, referencing. And I think that, uh, I know from a security, they're very high security facilities that they do. So I mean, who can I think of?
Okay. While you're up there, I do have a question. Maybe you could speak to, uh, I think it raised briefly and I've seen it in the community as well, issue about, uh, a mini mart next to a mini mart.
I'm sorry, a what?
You're, you're proposing a mini mart basically next to another mini mart. And what's the marketing theory behind that?
Well, I, I think I could tell you that, um, my partner explains this probably the best is that right now, when you're dealing with redevelopment of properties, cities right now don't have redevelopment agencies at their disposal anymore. And so what's become the new de facto redevelopment agency for developers is gas stations. They can come in and pay a high premium for corners that can stomach some of the improvements that need to be done or help us stomach some of those improvements as well as some car washes technically tend, tend to do that. But I think that from our standpoint, um, there we had a lot of interest in the gas stations of being there. This is a best in class user as well. Um, but from an underwriting standpoint, to make it all work from an economic standpoint, we need the gas station in there as well uh, to do that. And so it just, I'll tell you, a lot of the developments we're doing these days, we need gas stations to be there to help with the right of the project. But, um, there was a lot of use there, a lot of demand there from gas stations to be there. And I think that, again, we had, um, I can tell you that we had that, the two other pads on the eastern side that we have slated for QSR and potentially for, um, automotive. We haven't had a lot of traction unfortunately with the automotive users. QSRs had a little, some mild interest. We've now had some interest from other people about maybe combining the pads. So we're not sure what's going to end up there, but we're trying to, to solve for that piece of the puzzle as well.
Okay. So, so the proposed gas station operator is aware that there's a brand new upgraded facility right next door.
Very, very much so.
And that's part of the way, the way they operate.
Yeah. And, and, um, you know, gas stations, I think if you go to most corners, uh, you see gas stations on opposite sides of the street. Um, and I think in some ways it's also good for competition. I know where I live, there's no competition where the gas station is and I'm paying probably 20% or 20 cents a gallon more. I wish there was another gas station there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Martinez.
So I have a question, I think for John. These parcels are going to tie into the existing sewer infrastructure. Uh, so who's going to be financially responsible for tying that in and paying for any upgrades to our current sewer structure? Since I assume it hasn't been upgraded since 70s when it was built.
Yeah. So, uh, the current sewer, like the pump station.
Yeah, handling all the parcels.
In, in my discussion, uh, my discussions with the engineering department, um, it, discussed with our engineering team, it seemed that there was adequate capacity within, uh, the current pump station to, uh, to supply for the additional buildings and for the amount that we have here. The use storage is less intensive than definitely some other uses. So, um, at least in the preliminary conversations, it was felt that there was um, you know, there are of course impact fees, um, that the city charges for, uh, buildings, new square footage. Our purpose, uh, we are. One thing I just wanted to add, uh, in general, representatives.
Any other questions?
I do have kind of an odd question. The existing Kmart building. The existing shell is going to be used on that? The building itself is going to stay intact? The, the, the shell, so you're going to do like interior E I for the storage?
That's, that's correct. Yeah. And if, you know, um, if there are any specifics that, um, Aaron Anderson is here from, from public storage on, available on Zoom. This, but yes, the, the intent is to all intact, but they are investing. redoing the facade completely. Adding, adding some.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Gary, anything? Thank you. Anyone else want to get up?
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Please come to podium. Give us your name.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lufton. Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm a retired corrections officer. I've worked for the Department of Corrections for over 25 years. I too live in that same area where Ms. Escobar lives. Uh, all I'm asking is that those that want to do this, just take a moment and think about if you haven't done it already. We live there. You all picked it as a spot. We live there and we know what goes on there every single day. They, there's a, there's a Chevron at the corner of Hatch and Herndon already. They just took the 7-Eleven and added a gas station to it. Here three months ago, the entrance to 99, which is just a block, uh, west of, of that intersection or that area. Uh, they just took, uh, and shut down the, the entrance ramp because of construction work and a wall they were putting up along that way. And what it did in terms of creating havoc in that neighborhood, in terms of just people going to work coming home from work, getting in and out of that area just because of that one entrance to the freeway, which is right at the base of 99 is, it's the, uh, the Hatch Road exit. It's the west exit and/or an entrance. It created a, a real havoc for us, those that live there and people driving from other parts of series that had the, that relied on that on-ramp as a daily. Add another gas station, add another industrial thing there. And you're creating a situation that's going to, that, that has really, uh, enormous proportions in what we're already dealing with. As she was saying, the lighting in the neighborhood is already a question, is a big thing. You guys, it, again, if you don't live there, you, you don't go through there at night. It's very bad visibly in certain parts of going into the residential portion, which is associated right behind Kmart itself. We were also discussing the timing of everything. We're, we're in a timing crisis. And we say businesses have to go up and things have to be done. But if the timing is not right, why do we have to do it at a time like right this minute? Why can't this be held over because of, you know, uh, maybe a little bit more time to do more research and more considering of things that aren't really what they, what they appear to be right now. Because I can tell you adversely, it will affect the neighbors, the neighborhood. Because right now, uh, there are still trucks going back there for Home Depot. Uh, you hear a lot of, a lot of large 18 wheeler trucks back there behind that area of Kmart and along that associated corridor. You hear a lot of package dropping and late night dropping. And, uh, you hear a lot of trucks going in and out of there. And if you add a gas station or if you add a, uh, a storage facility back there, like she was saying, without a wall or something to protect that, 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 that sound and everything that's going on back there, or the privacy of her own back window. I know where she lives because we live in the same area. So we're speaking from an area of, of, of living in that, in that condition. And we're just voicing our opinion. Now we were, it, it sounded good to have, as you say, uh, your fast food or your, your, your coffee stop or something like that. But when you start saying additional gas station, or when you say an additional, uh, storage facility or something that's really going to create a lot of industrial pickup, it does affect the residents in a way that, you know, we only, we can express up to people from there here to, to, to express it to you all. But thank you again for hearing us.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Question? All right. Seeing none. Is there anybody on Zoom waiting to speak?
Yes, I see one hand raised, Adam Sapier, and I'm going to unmute your mic. One moment.
Okay, Adam, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, thank you for having me. I, I'm the building owner here. Um, and I apologize. I can't be there in person. I'm a caretaker for an elder mom and COVID. It just doesn't make sense. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to be on Zoom. I hear what the community is sharing and I definitely appreciate the comments. We've owned this for about six years now. And, you know, had a lot of challenges with Kmart there, as you guys know, and eventually they closed down. It's been vacant for three plus years, over three years. And we've gone through marketing this for most of those three plus years. Rog and his team have been involved for over a year, but we've been marketing it for, for three and a half years. And there just isn't demand for retail. This is, there's a reason why it shut down. There aren't many big retailers anymore in this world that take that much space. We've gone through several brokers on this. We've gone through speaking to different developers. And to be honest, it's causing a hardship on our end here. Because there just isn't demand for that type of retail. Now Rog and his team, who, if you've, one of the participants mentioned that they looked at their website and seen the other deals they've done, they really do care about the communities they work in. And. And I personally didn't speak to this, but I think it's sort of a genius idea, what they ended up creating here is they're not really taking away retail. They're using the back building for the self-storage, which does not require parking. And because of the excess parking that, that isn't required by that big building, they're able to put more pads on Hatch Road, directly on the road, which is the retail component of that area, and put actually more restaurants and the gas station and the retail uses that are being requested by the community. They're able to do more of that because they're not hogging all the traffic that a big box user would have had in the back there. Now, again, just to emphasize there, in three plus years, there haven't been any bigger retail operations to take the building. So this is really the best of both worlds to, to maintain a lot of retail in the front and use the existing building for storage. There isn't retail being taken away because the existing building doesn't require any parking and all that parking is being used for retail. So I just wanted to speak to that. And just from on our end, as property owners, there really is a hardship being created here. Kmart left unexpectedly and, and left us with a vacant building. We've been really working hard at this to find the right developer or the right tenant to take this. And we feel very fortunate and grateful that Evergreen stepped up here. We've been working with them closely to figure out a way to maintain the retail there. And this is really the best of both worlds, in my opinion. I hope the community, that this resonates with the community, what I just shared. And I hope that you guys are able to push this through and, and accept this proposal. I think it's a really good proposal for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Any questions of Adam? Okay, I see none. Anyone else want to speak before we close the public hearing?
Yes, I see one more hand, Aaron Anderson. Mr. Anderson, one moment, I'll unmute your mic.
Okay, good.
Hello, everybody. My name's Aaron Anderson, excuse me, representing public storage. And I just really wanted to add to what Adam said, what Rog said and what, what John said about our proposed use, creating a buffer in between the commercial and the residential to the north. You know, that the less intense use in that location will, will act as a barrier and there'll be, you know, much less traffic, no parking. And I think it'll be a benefit. And to the question of lighting, you know, we will have some building lights. We actually are in the process of coming up with photometric studies. And, you know, the light at the property line is pretty negligible. So we don't think it'll be, be a nuisance for the neighbors to the north. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Anderson? Being none? Okay.
As I was going down to Henry, that the old long is now a U-Haul, I believe. Now, is that kind of a parallel that we're asked, that we're looking on tonight with the old Kmart? It's not a U-Haul, but it's a commercial building that was transformed for a different use.
That's essentially what we're, what is being proposed here. So I probably ought to also explain something here that when Evergreen first came to us, you know, there were other individuals before them that came to planning staff and they just wanted to utilize the Kmart building as just storage facility only. I told them, no, it's not going to be possible. We wanted to keep that building intact with some commercial in the, in the frontage. And so when Evergreen came to us with this proposal, we realized that, well, if after they've been marketing this, you know, there's no big box business interested other than the storage facility, that this is probably going to be the way to go that staff would support. We would not be supporting this project if they were only doing storage only, only because of the commercial uses that they're proposing along the front.
It seemed similar in my mind.
What you just said, James, also builds on the concept, which was explained earlier about the storage facility doesn't need to use parking. So the parking can then be devoted to the new commercial uses. And we're seeing three of them tonight and two others in future, possibly. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Sorry about the mics, everyone. Any other questions or comments at this time? Anyone else in the audience want to speak or any other Zoom comments?
I do see Mr. Aaron Anderson has his hand raised again. Is that correct? Let me unmute him and have him answer.
No, 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 it must be stuck.
Okay.
My apologies.
Well, I'm sorry too, okay.
Sorry.
I see no other hands raised at this time, then.
Hey, no other hands raised. Anyone else in the audience have any other comments to make? Being none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for a discussion and a motion at some point.
Anybody else?
They have to have anything to add at this point? Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the tenant parcel map, VTM 2106 and condition use permit 2107.
Additional recommended actions on those conditions of the two resolutions for staff recommendation.
That too. I need to do required action, the adopt 2119. Okay, adopt PC revolution 2120 and PC 21.
I'll second it. And that motion did include the amendment that the staff outlined earlier?
Amendments that Michael said.
Okay, with that motion and made second, we'll put his call roll.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ketchel.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
All right, thank you. Go back to the remainder of the agenda. New business, we have none. Public meetings, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Matters initiated by planning, commission, and staff, we have unlisted reports. Commissioner, I believe at this point, our new commissioner should tell us basically his entire life story and we'll give you like eight or 10 seconds to do that. No, seriously. I think you like to do the interview, so.
No, thank you guys for appointing me. And I'm a serious resident, I'm a homeowner, involved in the community and news sports and.
Nice to have you, I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Appreciate you coming. Any reports from the commission down there? Nope. Here has none. City attorney, anything?
Nothing tonight, Chair, thank you.
Okay, city staff?
We have nothing else to report, thank you.
Okay. With that. Advertent until our next planning mission meeting, which will be held on Monday, November 1st, 2021.